It is April the 2nd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Father Stewart there to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our own Councilman Tony Allen. All rise please.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the gift of this day and for the beauty of this season, life springing forth, all the wonders of your creation. We thank you for this city of Granbury, for all the blessings that we receive here, for the liberties and the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans, as Texans, and as members of this community. We give you thanks. Father, thank you so much for these members of the council, these men and women who have given themselves to service for the sake of this city. Pray that you'd use their minds and hearts and direct them by divine wisdom to do the things that are best for the whole community. May your Holy Spirit of wisdom and of courage and peace fall upon each one of them. This we ask through Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Join me with a pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with no religion, justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to the Texas one state and under God, one indivisible.
I want to thank everybody for being here today. At this time, we usually have our citizens' participation. I don't believe we have any sign-ups for citizens' participation, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is that true, Carla? We'll move into the consent agenda at this time. The first one being consider approving City Council meeting minutes of March 19th, 2019's regular meeting. Second one being consider awarding bid number 181903 to elect Sanders Omega LLC based on their bid amount of $23,550 for concrete paving at the Granbury Cemetery. And number three, consider adopting ordinance number 19-19, amending the operating budget for the general and utility fund for the fiscal year 2018 through 19, which is basically some housekeeping there. And number four, consider approving the replacement of the network core switches at City Hall in the amount not to exceed $58,000. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over these consent agenda items. Are there any items that you wish to pull off or to make changes at this time? With none said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan and a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda. You want to move this one down since he's not here yet, or you okay with it?
Yeah.
Right now, we've got some personnel that's tied up in the traffic, probably the Crescent train or something, I don't know. We're going to hold off on number five, and hopefully he'll be here by then, and we'll jump back up to it. So we're going to move down to six, and actually, six and seven. It's a public hearing with a request or a development to amend the previous approved preliminary plat. And number seven is to adopt ordinance 17-20 of rezoning. So if I could, I'll ask Scott Sobchak to give us an update on that, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request to take the preliminary plat of the Saratoga addition and just focus on a small portion of this, which is this particular area right here, out of that entire preliminary plat. What they're proposing to do is create one existing final planted lot, incorporate an Eastwood Village lot into four lots. So we're taking one planted lot of record in Saratoga, adding the easternmost lot of the property of Eastwood Village, and rolling those two planted lots into four lots. So you can see in the picture there, that's the area of focus highlighted in the red. And that area brought to your right-hand side is the configuration of the four lots being proposed for the amended preliminary plat. Again, this shows the existing Lot 1, Block 1 of Saratoga to your right, with the Eastwood Village slivered to the left of Lot 1, Block 1. And again, the proposal is to take that Eastwood Village and the Lot 1, Block 1, incorporate those four planted lots. That's all it does to the entire preliminary plat for Saratoga. We couldn't process this as a staff amendment because it increases density, it changes the traffic pattern configurations of that intersection, and it also increases demand on your infrastructure, your water and sewer infrastructure. So there's a provision when that happens. It really needs to go to P&amp;Z and City Council. So the second part of this is to actually take that portion of the Eastwood Village, which is currently zoned light commercial, and bring that into the heavy commercial zone, which is what currently Lot 1, Block 1 of the Saratoga addition is zoned as well. So you can see the configuration of the lots laid out. That area that's zoned for Eastwood Village is highlighted to your left as light commercial zoning. Again, the entirety of that whole block, all four lots, being zoned heavy commercial. So as a part of the proposal, we sent out notifications to adjoining property owners for the zoning district. To date, we've seen no opposition letters being forwarded to the city or concerns being forwarded to the city. Your Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated on the issue and voted by a recommendation of six a's and zero nays to recommend approval of the preliminary plat, which has no variances associated with it, and the rezoning request as presented by the applicant. We also, in accordance with state statute, notified this in the publications, in the Hood County News. And again, we received no opposition from the notifications or the mailouts. The rezoning request is commensurate with the future land use map contained within the comprehensive plan. You can see it's earmarked for commercial. And then there's our notification halo showing the adjoining properties of everybody who got notice in accordance with state law. Mayor, Council, again, the P&amp;Z recommended by vote of six, the nothing, approval of the preliminary plat as presented, and approval of the rezoning request, item number seven, as presented by the applicant. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for item number six and seven. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on either one of these items? Okay. Thank you, J.C. Here and none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions for Scott or staff on this particular items? Here and none, I'll entertain, like I say, this is a two-part one. We'll go to number six here. I'll entertain a motion to amend the previous preliminary plat.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any other discussion on this item? Here and none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next one, item number seven, is the ordinance for the rezoning. Council, do you have any questions or comments on this item? Here and none, once again, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the said ordinance for the rezoning.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner and second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on this item? Here and none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That too is approved. Thank you, Council. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 1921, which is approving a request of Kenneth Dixon for an SUP for a winery in the central business district zone. Once again, I'm going to call upon Scott Sobchak to give us some information on that, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is an application for a business storefront running the downtown square just off Houston Street. It's zoned central business district, which allows for a wine tasting facility under the issuance of an SUP under the zoning ordinance. We have roughly a little over 1,000-foot of tenant space. Mr. Dixon, the applicant, does not own the property. He's leasing the property from the property owner of record. The city staff sent notices out in accordance with state statute within 200 feet, and by the time of this council meeting, we received one request and opposition. Should be included in your agenda packet. The opposition notification comprises roughly 3% of the adjoining property within the 200-foot notification halo. Notices were also posted in the Hood County News. This is our zoning ordinance that shows the matrix depicting the SUP requirement within the CBD. Again, we have a site plan layout. We saw the previous slide was the site plan being presented by the applicant. There's no parking requirements in the CBD, so there's no off-street parking element to wrestle with here. And then the other supplemental standard is outdoor lighting, again, not really a requirement within the CBD. To the upper left, you have our definition of a wine tasting facility as itemized in our zoning ordinance. It states that a facility such as this is an establishment that manufactures bottles, labels, and packages wine to dispense free for consumption on the winery premises. And the key word there is "or." Or for sale for ultimate consumers, for one, consumption on the winery premises, and two, unbroken packages for off-premise consumption. And we've presented this definition to the applicant, and he feels that he, and staff as well, that he falls squarely under this definition for that statement after the "or." He's got a winery over by Chalk Mountain where he's fermenting the wine, bottling it there, but then he's bringing it to this particular location for consumption on the premises, for the tasting, and for sale in unbroken packages. So city staff feels that he squarely meets the definition. You also have, because this topic came up at P&amp;Z, that's why I'm beliberating the issue a little bit, we asked him to get with his legal counsel. His legal counsel provided us a commentary in an email form that should be included in your agenda packet as well, stating that they are in agreement, they are in effect operating in accordance with the wine tasting facility by our definition.
Mr. Mayor, can I, we can barely hear up here, and I know they probably can't hear either, so we either need to project or turn something up. So back up to the item in question, because you lost me before that, and I've not caught up yet.
Okay. So one of the questions, one of the questions that was raised by the Planning and Zoning Commission was whether or not the applicant fell under the definition of wine tasting facility in our zoning ordinance. And a key word, or a key element in this definition is how this definition is dissected by that word "or." It is in effect an establishment that manufactures bottles, labels, and packages wine to dispense free for consumption on the winery premises, "or." And so P&amp;Z got locked up, in essence, that they weren't manufacturing wine on the premise on this particular location on the square. But there's a key word there, and that's "or." Or for sale to ultimate consumers for one, consumption on the winery premise, and two, unbroken package, off-premise consumption. And so we made the applicant aware of this dialogue that took place at P&amp;Z, and he went back, had his attorney look at the definition, and came back with an email response, which you have in your agenda packet, saying that we are clearly operating in the second portion of this compound sentence after the "or" under items 1 and 2. And dialogue with the applicant, we showed him the definition, and we feel that he will be operating under the CO as that wine tasting facility under this definition as well. Is there any questions regarding the definition?
No, thank you.
Okay. So that was one of the hangups at P&amp;Z. I wanted to kind of clarify that. We had a ultimate vote of six a's, one nay, and one abstention. So the recommendation is coming forward to you with an approval recommendation for one and one, with a condition being imposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission that a term limit for the SUP be set at one year. Now, I will tell you that this term limitation on the SUP wasn't offered up by staff in the staff report. We didn't recommend it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. In fact, when we heard this, we thought it best to tie the condition or the SUP to the TABC permit, the longevity of the TABC permit. So as long as the applicant or the operator of this storefront maintains their TABC permit in good standing, then the SUP permit will remain active. If it ever voids out or gets revoked, then the SUP will automatically void out and get revoked. So that is, in essence, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. You do have a term limitation on there. That was not, that was not a part of staff's recommendation. We actually got up to the podium and recommended this tie to the TABC permit, but the P&amp;Z went ahead and motioned as they did. But it's still a recommendation of approval by four, one, and one. Be happy to entertain any questions, should Council have any.
Scott, what was the reasoning for the one-year term?
I could not glean an understanding of why they imposed the one-year term.
Because we normally haven't done that in the past.
Just from their conversation. I can tell you, from my perspective, from a planner's perspective, this is an area that's zoned central business district. It's a little different from like an SUP for B&amp;B in a residential zone. A residential is a more protected type use. You want to be more careful with the adjoining single-family residential, higher-protected uses. Here, we're clearly in a commercial district. There's no need to apply a term limitation. But it makes sense to not apply these in perpetuity tied to the property that doesn't void out if the business goes away. And we hope it's successful and stays there.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this issue? Is the owner in the audience? Okay. Just see if you're here. You don't have to speak. Who do you want to speak?
Chuck Tridiglione, Bull Island Ranch and Vineyards. I appreciate you all having me here today. And who wouldn't want to come to this town and be a part of this town after, with everything that's going on in this world? And you get Father Stewart up here saying prayer and pledge allegiance to the flag, and it's, you know, I love it. We want to be here, all right? We run a winery, we run a winery, vineyard and winery out near Chalk Mountain. We do, we're the real deal. We grow and we make wine. This TABC, the wording here, back when, you really did have to have, make wine in the back room, didn't make much sense, coming from a family that's been making wine for 100 years. And now that we're making it out here, you can't make wine in the back room. We don't, we don't call it wine where we come from, okay? So I'll just tell you that right now. So we, so TABC actually looked at that as well and said, yeah, this has got to change. I mean, it doesn't make much sense. But if I have to make wine, yeah, I could bring a few barrels over here and do whatever I have to do. I've got enough of them. But now, we're excited to be a part of this town, and I've been a part of this town for many years. Actually, never lived in Granbury, but I lived in Fort Worth and Alito. But my ranch has been out here, and I've been driving through and shopping and buying my agricultural products and eating at the restaurants here for 40 years. So I know this town very well, all right? And when we had an opportunity to get on this square, we jumped at it, because I think this town's ripe for this. I think they're going to really like what we can bring to this town. And, you know, not bragging, but we are probably one of the most decorated wineries in North Texas over the last two years.
I'll brag about that.
And we're very proud of it. We're very proud of it.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and say there, is anybody else in the public wanting, we should speak on this issue? None, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions for this gentleman or the staff?
Did you bring samples?
Yes, they're all in my car.
That's Bruce White.
Yes, my counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So we, in our packet, I don't see any opposition letter, but it looks like it was right there on the corner of Pearl.
Yes, it was.
So what was, what was the gist of the opposition?
They really didn't specify what their particular opposition was. If memory serves me correctly, they just were opposed to it and just kind of left it vague.
What?
Vague.
Vague?
They were vague in their, in their statement.
And the...
My apologies for not including that in the agenda packet. That should have been included.
Okay. So, and it was four, one, and one, as far as the vote goes?
Right.
So, and it was, staff is recommending follow TABC's permit, and they're saying one year. How did that discussion evolve, or did it just come out in the motion?
It just...
Well, but there was never really an answer. It just kind of, it just kind of appeared.
Right. So attending the P&amp;Z, it just kind of came out in the motion. There was no discussion or deliberation on why term limitation was needed. It's just when P&amp;Z motioned, they applied the term limit. And so we took a step back, and in fact, I got to the podium and said it would seem more reasonable to tie the application of the SUP, kind of marry the SUP and the TABC permit together and not give these term limitations. Again, this is a commercial zone. And they went forward with the term limitation.
So normally, when somebody votes in opposition to something, there is some reason. There's some statement saying this is why. What was the reasoning?
So the 4-1-1 vote, so I will say this, the 4-1-1 vote, the opposition, the naysayer, was a commission member who seemed to be more centered on the fact that the applicant did not, was not in attendance to support the application. So we have a failure to appear clause in our zoning ordinance. And so the applicant, Chuck, was running a little bit late, was not able to attend the dialogue with P&amp;Z. And from my observation of the deliberations, the nay vote was prompted by the failure to appear.
Is it, is it rare for somebody not to show up?
It's pretty rare.
Okay. Okay. So what was your reason, what was your reason for not being here?
I couldn't get you and Glen Rose to get on the same page. I had a hearing, I had to be at Glen Rose City Council meeting at 5:00. And over here, we had me 19th on the dock, and I just knew I could zip over here in time. Well, it didn't happen that way. Someone had to talk about dog catchers and everything for 45 minutes in Glen Rose, so I was looking at my watch going, I got to get out of here. Anyway, I had to talk to them. I'm helping put on the Glen Rose Wine and Art Festival this year, and we had to get that approved, and so they needed me for that.
So just a scheduling conflict?
It was a scheduling conflict I thought I could make and couldn't...
But I will say, for his defense, as soon as the gavel hit the table and the meeting adjourned, the applicant walked in.
How long did you stand in that hallway waiting for this discussion? You're right to answer that.
No, I tried. I really did. I thought I was going to, I thought there was not going to be a problem at all, but y'all zipped through 19 on the list pretty quick, I guess, that day. So you got through things pretty fast.
There are no nonsense boards.
That's because he's not City Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Council, any more questions? Here and none, Council, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mayor.
We'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve this with the TCEQ standards rather than...
TABC.
Sorry, T. I got my...
You can go to Water City.
Sure, let's talk about water tonight. With the, yeah, with those guidelines.
TABC.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to approve the said SUP with no term limits, and we have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, Council?
So Mayor, for clarification, we're striking the term limits and adding the TABC permit tied to it.
You want to strike the term limits or add that too? You want to add the T... Yes, yes.
Wonderful. Y'all come visit.
So Council, why we haven't voted on it yet? Any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you. Welcome to Granbury. Okay, I'm going to move, jump back up to number five. I see John Martin has walked in. So hold that place there, Scott. Item number five is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1911 authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation for the purpose of paying contractual obligation to be incurred for the purchase and acquisition of two fire apparatuses. And I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on this, if you would please, Chris.
You may recall during the budget process last July, or June, we talked about buying two pieces of firefighting equipment, a new pumper truck and a new ladder truck. And recently, I guess as late as October, November, we actually approved the purchase orders for those and directed staff to figure out the best way to finance that equipment. So we're bringing back the option to you tonight. Ava has been working with Mr. Martin, our financial advisor, to come up with a possible money savings approach compared to a lease purchase. And so in light of his work, we'll turn it over to Mr. John Martin and kind of go through the process.
Thank you, Chris, and my apologies for my tardiness tonight.
Don't let it happen again.
Pardon me?
Don't let it happen again.
I'll do my best. Got to tell people to slow down out there on 377.
Oh, that would work.
There was a bad accident out there. Chris summed it up great. I mean, we'd looked at the idea and had talked to a couple of different financial institutions about the idea of doing a lease purchase, compared that, and after you figure the value and so forth involved of doing a direct placement bank loan. We also talked to some various financial institutions about giving us a comparison. So we had an apples-to-apples to go by in terms of whether we do debt, which tax is a debt, versus a lease purchase, which you would pay through your general fund operating and so forth. Nice thing about being debt is, as of right now, it's not subject to rollback or any tax cap or anything like that. So that is certainly a concern, given the environment that we're in in Austin these days. So the, we've had some very preliminary discussions on this, and what we'll do is we'll be firming things up on here, in about a month, really. May 2nd, we'll be finalizing everything with whoever the selected lender may be. We'll get indications, and we'll work from there. The idea, given the city the most flexibility there to where you could pay this off virtually at any time with no penalty and that sort of thing, but we're still seeing very, very attractive rates, doing this as a CO-type deal. And the last indication that we got just last week was 2.36%, and that's just talking to one lender. We hadn't even opened up, opened it up to talk to others. So that's, I think that's still pretty aggressive. So again, we'll be back to you. This is, as you all have done COs in the past, this is the first step, and we'll come back to you here for the May 21 meeting for action. We'll have a presentation in terms of how everything came in. Happy to answer any questions.
John? Council, do you have any questions for John? Come on, Mr. Allen, I know you got one.
No, John's a good man. I do have one for Chris.
Certainly.
Whenever we were talking about this in the budget and we voted on it, I asked where the money's coming from? And I believe you told us at that meeting, and I could be wrong, you correct me, that part of it was coming out of a fund, that Scott supposed to be doing something, and he hadn't started or something, or one of your departments. I shouldn't say it, Scott, I apologize. And you was going to get some of it from there.
Don't know what you're talking about, I'm sorry.
How were you planning on paying for them?
We budgeted for it out of the maintenance operation.
In bonds?
No, we budgeted straight through the maintenance and operation, through lease purchase.
To purchase it?
A lease purchase agreement, to purchase it.
Okay, so we're not a lease purchase, but here, we're going to sell more bonds.
We're going to sell bonds instead of doing a lease purchase. It's the same debt either way, it's just the package different. This is more forthright, really, with the public, they get to see what we're doing.
You can still, you do not have to, if I could make one point on that...
Well, you owe it either way if you move forward.
You don't necessarily have to levy a tax, so it's just like you have some water and sewer. You use your water and sewer to pay that tax-supported debt. Here, you could use, you could transfer money from your general fund into the high nest fund to offset the need to, to levy a tax. So, that's the nice thing about it, is there's not any kind of lien or anything like that.
Still comes out of the bottom line, John.
Yeah, it's which pot of money you want to pull it from. It's just what pot of, pot of money you, I mean, yeah, you owe it.
The money to service the debt is in the budget now, so it's just how you want to do it, you want to issue, uh, uh, bonds, or you want to do a lease purchase?
What's the best for the city?
That's, that's what we're presenting to you.
Sir?
That's what we're presenting to you, is the issue of the bonds.
What's the savings over this versus the lease?
We were able to get a little better interest rate, just up front, over a half point, so about fifty basis points cheaper, so I didn't do the spreadsheet, maybe Ava has that, but...
A half percent difference?
Oh, I did, was looking, which is che, asked which one's cheaper, and, okay, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, initially, we were looking at two point eight percent with, uh, lease purchase financing, actually, two point eight five, and the rate with the C O issuing the private placement certificate of obligation, we are looking at two point three six percent. That's a savings of over seventy, eighty thousand dollars in the long run, over the term of the loan. So, it definitely makes sense to do the private placement, that issue, and back when you, um, approved the budget, we did say that we would be, uh, exploring different financing options, the ba, whatever is the best for the city, and that's what we have done the last few months, we've been looking at when the delivery date of the trucks are and what the interest rates we're doing, they were over three percent, so this is really the right time to do this financing, and because the C Os are coming in at the lower interest rate, and now it's significant, um, as Chris mentioned, it's about almost fifty basis points, that's a reason we should be looking at that as well.
In addition, addition to that, the interest rate's cheaper, what does the leasing company charge you to set it up? I know it serves a fifty-something thousand on y'all's, John.
Yeah, um, it is built into the rate, and I think initially, you see maybe a thousand and two thousand dollar escrow payment that they require, but it's built into the rate. And that's the same thing happens on this side, John breaks out his fees, but it is, um, it is not gonna be an additional cost to the city, it's, uh, captured in the analysis that he provided.
Thank you, young lady.
Thank you.
Another differential in, in, uh, lease purchases, you all are probably aware, when you want to pay off a lease early, you have a purchase price, and the, and the vendor is going to have a, uh, or whoever is the lessor will have a purchase price to get the, to pay off that lease, to own it, so...
So, there's how that, John?
There's typically a premium. No, this, this would not, C Os do not have that, they'd be eligible for redemption at any time.
I'm talking about the lease that was offered to us.
Well, we've just, we stopped when we started talking about the details, and we started the differential of cost and price and so forth, so it was so, so much more beneficial to the city to do the, a C O versus a lease that we didn't get, I'm just saying, a typical lease, you have a purchase price.
So, y'all's company was doing the lease also, or looking...
No, sir, no, sir, we cannot be the lender.
Okay, but you just said that a typical lease has a buyout at the end.
If you want to prepay the lease to, to own, because it's a lease, you don't own it, right? Here, and with the debt, you own it, okay? With the lease, you don't own it, but if you want to pay off that lease and own it, there's typically a premium paid, so if you owe a million dollars, the, the payment might be to pay off is a million twenty-five thousand or something like that, because the lender wants to, that, they want to be paid, if you're gonna get paid off, they take a fee for that.
Is that the way this lease was, that, uh, this company...
No, sir, as I said, all we've done at this point in time, we were just looking at apples-to-apples in terms of costs.
Okay.
We didn't even get it, we didn't get into the, we didn't get into the details. I was just saying typically.
Got you.
I might just add that, uh, based on the debt rolling off, um, there, you know, we were really clear at the budget workshop, that y'all did not want to assess an increased tax for this vehicle, or these vehicles, and we can do that without that, based on debt that's rolling off.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So, with current interest rates and where they're, where they are and where they're headed, how comfortable, well, yeah, how comfortable are you with this rate? And if you, do you see any, any reason in the future where we'd want to pay it off early at this rate?
Well, that's a great point, Councilmember Mobley, one thing I, I didn't want to belabor talking, sitting up here talking, but right now, you're actually earning more in your investment accounts than you are what you'd be paying on this, so at two point three six percent, I bet you Ava's getting probably two and a half percent on her, I don't know, pool investments these days.
That's all?
If not more.
A little bit more than that, yeah, but we, we have to obey by some, uh, rules, so we have to go with safety. Uh, we are looking at two point eight on some of our investments, yeah.
So, so if we're making two point eight, we're paying two point three six, there's no reason to pay this off when we're making more on this?
Right, you're a smart man.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for John and the staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said resolution number nineteen dash eleven.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, John, hope your trip back is a little better.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, counsel, we'll go back down and we'll move back to number nine, which is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two, and I'm gonna call upon Scott Sopcek to, uh, read into that one, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, and Mr. Manager, what we have is a request to, uh, issue an S U P for a office in a residential zone. Uh, this is the old manner of time, B and B, that has since been vacated, uh, it's on southeast corner of Lambert and Bluff, it's roughly point two acres, it's in a single-family R seven district. Uh, again, this is an S U P request for professional office, more specifically, this is going to be a car aside out of the residence, about two hundred and forty square feet for kitchen and bathroom design and consultation services. The property would remain, single-family residential, with the office as a secondary use under the S U P. Uh, this is a picture of the site, again, as the previous B and B with off-street parking requirements, there are additional parking, uh, onsite currently, you can see the two parking spaces that's notched out in the lower right-hand screen that was provided for in the B and B. So, with the office space, uh, one space for every two hundred and fifty feet, all they need is one space, they have that with two available. The zoning ordinance requires, under office professional studio in a residential zone in S U P, as you can see in the upper left-hand corner of the matrix, site plan is not required, offices, again, the secondary use, you can see the supplemental uses around are all single-family residential. We, city staff mailed out twenty-six notices to adjoining property owners within two hundred feet. We also published in the Hood County News, as of two nights' council meeting, we have seen, we have received no letters in support or in opposition of the request. And in this particular instance, your planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval by a vote of six a's, zero nays, with a one-year expiration term applied to the S U P. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Well, Scott, I think when you talk, when you hear yourself, you get quieter, so try to overcome that, because we're really having a hard time hearing you up here.
Put your chair down where your mouth is right on it, yeah?
Maybe you can, does it tilt up more? There you go.
Got all kinds of...
Put it right in front of your mouth, see? There you go.
Okay, could you start all over?
No.
I'll recap the, uh, the planning and zoning commission recommended unanimously approval, uh, with a one-year term limitation.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, at this time, I'll open up to a public hearing, does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, counsel, do you have any questions for Scott or the staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said, uh, the said S U P with the expiration of one year from the city council approval, uh, which will be April the second, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number ten is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Paul Martin to replat lots eight through ten of the Sunrise Bay addition, I'm gonna call upon Scott to give us some, uh, staff report on that, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, what we have is a plat request that's located in our E T J, you can see it's, uh, just generally north of the, uh, creek crossing in Thorpe Springs, it comprises about point five acres, the proposal is to replat three acres into one lot of record, so here, we're decreasing the density from three recorded lots into one building site, again, uh, decreasing demand on the infrastructure as well. It was platted in nineteen seventy, uh, decreases the density by two, you can see the aerial photography of the vacant site there. The plat, uh, being proposed, you can see the, the soft line, two lines in the middle are the two lot lines that are proposing to be abandoned and vacated, we send franchise letters out to see if any franchise utilities have any infrastructure investments in there, we've received, received no commentary from those franchise utilities, the term limitation has expired for them to respond, the development is sustained by sanitary sewer or septic systems, and there is a three-inch, my understanding, a three-inch water line that traverses through the area as a part of the, uh, Homeowners Association. So, we have a litany of variances with this, uh, we have a variance to one, three, one, and four-ten to not improve Sunrise Bay Court to an urban standard facility that is standing curb and gutter, county standard streets there, we have a variance to three-nine and four-five to not extend an eight-inch central sewer line from its nearest location, again, this is an area sustained by septic systems, we're decreasing density, and then we have a variance to three-nine and four-six to not upsize the existing three-inch line. You have a, uh, recommendation, you can see, uh, to your right-hand side, your engineer has made a memorandum or report on this regarding the variances, recommending approval of the variances as presented to support the application, and, and again, we're, uh, decreasing demand, your planning and zoning commission deliberated on this, and by a vote of six a's and zero nays, they're recommending approval of the variances as presented by the applicant and approval of the replat as presented. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing, anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, counsel, do you have any questions for Scott or the staff on this particular item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said plat with the said variances.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving to item number eleven, which is a public hearing and consider approving a request or petition for Ryan Bose to voluntary annex a property, seventeen point four-two-three acres of land within the Miami County Schools Land Survey, abstract number thirty, three forty-eight, into the city's corporate boundaries. Uh, Scott, I'm gonna go ahead and let you, uh, read into this, if you would please.
Mayor, what we have from the property owner is a voluntary annexation request, it's currently, uh, contiguous to the existing city limit boundary, if you're familiar with the site, this is the same owner, developer, that owns the site to the south, is currently in the city, that is developing the office complex, apartment complex, uh, we looked at his final plat application, and he's underway with the development as we speak. This particular property had a development agreement tied to it as well, uh, that development agreement, as a part of the loop annexations, had a couple of the annexation triggers, and in essence, it stated if this property ever develops or it goes from the previous owner to a new owner, then that's considered a voluntary annexation request, so those, those triggers have already been pulled, in essence, so it's good to see him file a voluntary annexation request, but by the development agreement, we have the right to annex it anyway voluntarily under the agreement. Again, that's from the development agreement, those are the events that terminated immunity from annexation, the property owner wants to integrate this in his development to the south, so he wants to bring it into the city, he's working currently with city staff on kind of the concept layout for this particular property. But to circle back to the annexation request, uh, because this is tied to chapter forty-three, uh, which is, um, the unpopulated portion of chapter forty-three to annex property without the required two readings, um, there's a way to receive this, and that's a two-motion vote by counsel, first to consider and grant said petition, which is what he filed, and then to, secondly, consider and approve the ordinance providing for the voluntary annexation of the subject property, so it's a two-part motion in order to bring this into the city. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, at this time, I'll open the public hearing up, does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, counsel, do you have any questions for Scott or the staff on this item? As Scott had indicated there, this is a two-part motion, counsel will entertain, first, a motion to consider granting the said posi, the said petition, entertain a motion to approve. I've got that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on the, uh, said petition? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The second part of this is to consider adopting ordinance number nineteen twenty-three, providing for the voluntary annexation of the said property. Counsel, is there any discussion on this part of this item? If, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen twenty-three.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That, too, is approved. Thank you, Scott. Our next item is to consider adopting resolution number nineteen twelve, directing the city staff to begin the proceedings, which shall include the preparation of the draft service plans for the voluntary annexation of all these following sections, and authorizing the city manager to receive and enter into an annexation development agreement for agriculture exempt property owners for a term of up to ten years under the city standardized term of that agreement. Chris, do you want me to turn this over to you, or are we gonna turn this over to Scott, or...
Scott.
Scott, okay, Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, what we have is a request to, uh, engage staff to begin the annexation, involuntary annexation proceedings of the five enumerated pieces of property, let me flip over to the map, generally showing where those properties are, they're itemized by sections one through five, you can see some of these properties are just filling in voids in the city boundary, and, uh, other areas are some of the corridors where the city, um, has an interest in bringing in and, uh, protecting that particular corridor. I can tell you as a rule, uh, since I've been here, we've tried to, we've had kind of an understanding when the city annexes property to minimize as much impact to residential rooftops as possible, so all this area, section one through five comprises about two thousand four hundred and seventy or eighty acres in, in land, out of that two thousand four hundred and seventy acres, it appears that over about seventeen hundred has an agricultural exemption tied to it. So, as a part of the chapter forty-three annexation processes, when we start looking at annexing property, and if there's an ag exemption, chapter forty-three requires us to offer a standard development agreement, that is, if they execute that and bring that back to the city before the deadline, it keeps them out of the city, provide that they maintain the ag exempt status in good standing with a appraisal district. And we've seen that on the loop, so when you look at the annexation of what the city undertook on the outer loop, the northeast loop, you'll see the strip right away and a couple of little two-acre blotches where there's no ag exemption, the rest of the property is, is, remains out. And, and the property owner can maintain, um, conducting their ag exempt business there once it's filed with the appraisal district and with the city under this, under this development agreement, under the terms of, of the executed agreement. So, it looks like, I'll get to the map here, we took a rough estimate of looking at the appraisal records, what properties would be in and out, and those properties that are ag exempt are shaded in blue, and the ones that don't enjoy an ag exempt status, based on our cursory research with the appraisal district, are highlighted in, in yellow, and a large portion of that, especially on the north, uh, Old Granbury roadside, that's the golf course, that one yellow square comprises over, um, a little over a hundred acres, for example, so out of that six hundred acres, a little over a hundred acres of that is a golf course, and then the remaining balance of that is, uh, some of those properties that will immediately come in if, in fact, the council chooses to go forward, uh, with the annexation of the... come in if, in fact, the council chooses to go forward with the annexation of this property. So as the mayor read out, this is kind of a two-part process. The resolution directs staff to begin the annexation proceedings after today. If the council votes in the affirmative, we'll send tomorrow notices out to all the property owners that are within these five areas. And that's part of your direction to us. We'll also begin the preparation of the service plan. We'll coordinate with all the other departments, and the service plan will be part of the presentation at the two public hearings. It also authorizes the city manager's office and their designees to start working on sending out the development agreements. We recognize where those ag exempt properties are. We had a surveyor do the deed research for us at the appraisal district, and they've provided us kind of a, an Excel spreadsheet of the properties, the tax roll numbers, whether they're ag exempt or not. So we have all those labels ready to go, and so those draft development agreements will go out. And this will also authorize us, city manager and his designees, to receive those signed documents before a deadline date. Also, as a part of the statutory requirement under Chapter 43, we have to accept the introduction of the draft ordinance. So, get a little closer to the mic here. So the introduction of the draft ordinance is a procedural requirement under Chapter 43. They're included in your agenda packet. Again, it's just a base ordinance. If you'll notice, in the draft ordinance for each section, there's not a service plan. It says this page intentionally left blank. That's because we, you're not, you haven't directed us to engage staff to work on the construction of the service plan, which will be presented at a later public hearing date. So, and again, this is just the first step in a series of steps. We have 90 days to complete this process. We're looking generally at having the public hearings in May. That's the next agenda item, is setting those two public hearing dates. And then we'll also put that on our, we have a requirement to put that on our website as well. So, should council want to go forward with this and vote in the affirmative, we know our directive, and we'll commit resources to do what we need to do.
Thank you, Scott. Chris, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah. From what Scott told me, there's about 20 homes that's in this annexation, proposed annexation map.
Twenty-nine. So we did a rough estimate, and there's about 29 residences out of all this 2,470 acres that were part of the inclusion that may be brought in.
And historically, what Granbury has done is not gone out and annex subdivisions. So the idea is to spend a lot of activity, development activity, on some of these tracks interests already to build apartment complexes or subdivide. And so, you know, it's time to look at this pretty serious and start annexing these properties before they become developed and have to deal with it from the ETJ. And also, let's just be flat out with you, it's very difficult under the law to annex. You see the whole litany of things that we've got to go through to do this. It's a very complicated process, and so we're gonna deal individually with a lot of property owners. And so it's gonna be a busy, busy time if y'all move forward.
Mayor, may I ask Chris a question on that?
You sure can, Mr. Allen.
I know we discussed a little of it, but how long do we have to give them service out there? And I'm talking about water. I'm talking about sewer and water.
Well, that's part of the service plan that we have to develop, and that will be brought up during the first public hearing. We'll have two public hearings, and that will be disclosed and developed by then. And that's May 7th, I believe.
So within a certain amount of years, we'll have that for them?
No, not necessarily. Because we're not required to put water and sewer, or we're just required to provide the same services that we provide other people. If there's other people, like we have places in our city limits that don't have water and sewer, they're too far away, and we're not required to extend it to a ranch house that's on 30 acres that's all by itself. When it gets developed, the developer will be able to town to our water and extend it into that subdivision. That's the purpose.
Yeah, but 29 homes are out there.
They're on, they're, they're being taken care of probably some other way than currently the way we're.
Well or something.
Yeah, well and septic, and if it's within a certain distance, you know, they will need to town to our water at their cost.
But if a developer goes out there and buys 200 acres, then they'll pay for having it run from X to Y.
Uh-huh. You bet. That's, that's what our code currently provides for.
Okay.
And so that will, that will probably end up in the service plan in some type of wording, whereas as it develops, it's on the developer's expense to do that.
I'm glad it's.
But you know, a good example would be some, something like, there's that house over, between Ashley Oaks and 377 Business, there was a house out there that was all by itself, and we, we had to issue a variance to allow them not to have to town to the sewer, or I can't remember all that we did for them. But because they were in the city limits, they needed to at least look at the possibility of tying onto the city water instead of drilling a new well. And y'all had to make that decision. That's a couple of years ago when that happened, but that's a good example of a house that's been annexed into the city that doesn't have city services close to it. We still provide police and fire and trash service and mosquito spraying and everything else, you know.
Same thing they get now, they just get it from the county.
Maybe.
You're saying the county don't give them service?
I, I don't know.
Chris, you do know.
I don't know.
I missed last 29 houses instead of 200 houses.
Sure.
Because we'd have a packed crowd when it happens, I promise you.
Oh, you'll probably have a packed crowd anyway.
I'm not for one, one annex, everything. I'm sorry.
Well, we're just, we're just moving along in the direction we were given, sir.
I understand.
And we were there, so vote against it however you want to. That's your call.
I got you.
You told me what to do, too.
Council, any more discussion on this annexation?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
So, we'd ask, could you explain what the ramifications are for the homeowner out there? Because that's what's gonna impact, it sounds like that's what's, it's gonna impact the most. So can you illustrate what that means? Because everybody fears the word annexation. They certainly fear the words involuntary annexation. So let's talk about the dollar amounts and why anybody, why the city would want to do this, and why anybody would want this to happen to them.
Well, annexation, for the most part, is to help you control and organize your growth. You know, you, you don't want just urban sprawl everywhere, and you need organized land use and growth. And so with annexation, it allows you to do that. It also extends your ETJ to another distance to help eliminate that sprawl as well. So that as it develops, it's developed in an orderly manner with transportation corridors throughout that connects, that allows for improved roads for emergency vehicles to access the subdivisions in the neighborhoods. And, and also the services that we provide. You know, I don't know what somebody in the county pays for trash service, but, you know, the trash service in the city is cheaper than what I hear some of the other rural customers are paying for. There's some benefits. You know, if you town to the city water, it's at the city rate instead of one and a half times. But I think more importantly, what you're probably asking me is the financial impact that it would have on someone. And we did, our staff put together, based on the median household value, it was, the tax implications would be just under $800 for a median household of 171,000 or 200,000. And so they figured at 200,000, and our tax rate is almost 40 cents, so it's just under $800 per 200,000. So if somebody lives on the $400,000 house, it's just under $1,600. And, you know, if it goes up higher than that, it multiplies the same. So if it's 100,000, it'd be half that, so.
So on the average home, it's $65 a month. Now, I understand the folks that basically are surrounded by the city, because they use the city services anyway, even if they're effectively in the county. Okay.
That's true. You know, the, you know, annexation could be termed a dirty word to a lot of people that, that live right on the edge of the city that don't want it. And the bottom line is, is the city continues to grow, and we need to be able to continue to expand our services to those people as, as it grows. And we don't want to leave anybody behind, you know. I think, I think a good example of another area that needs to be annexed that's not currently on this map would be the Shore subdivision. It's right over behind State Farm. It's a little doughnut hole, and the hesitancy has been through the years is, we feel like we would have to provide sewer service to that neighborhood. I'm not sure that's the case, but we didn't include that in this ordinance. But I've had people that live in that subdivision ask me if we could annex that subdivision. And I said, well, if you'll get a petition, that'll make it real easy. We can do the voluntary annexation. But nobody's done that yet, so. But there are little niches where we have problems. Really important is water and firefighting supplies. Where you have a subdivision go in and they put in their own water wells and, and don't town to city services, you have less than standard fire flows. You know, I've got a friend that lives in Mallard Point, and I was visiting him one day, and I said, you know what that black fire hydrant means in front of your house? He said, know what? And I said, that means you can't tie a fire truck to it and pump water out of it. And he was shocked. But that's the facts. Anywhere somebody has a black fire hydrant in front of their home, they don't have adequate pressure for fighting, fighting a fire. And that's not acceptable in our city standards, and, and we will not allow that to happen. And so that's a point of being tied on to our services, is we provide those services and require the developer, when they develop, to have those resources in place. Same thing with the streets, you know, street standards, curb and gutter. And I'm not saying that you can develop something else. I mean, come before you with a variance and ask for it and get a, like we've got at the Knox Ranch project, if it ever develops, it's, it's open ditch drainage and strip streets without curb and gutter. And, and that was been approved through this process. And, and they've also agreed to not be annexed over a period of years until they get the mud paid off, you know, if they ever build this thing. So there's all kinds of negotiations that take place with subdivisions to encourage them and help them move along. But the ultimate goal is, is to make sure that our citizens that are taxpayers are not carrying the load for everybody using the facilities of the city. It's, it's an equal opportunity city for somebody to come to town, drive on our streets, use our parks, enjoy our square, enjoy everything that we do, and, and be a citizen. It's, we don't want to prevent somebody from being able to do that.
So to put this in perspective, for an item we just voted on, the fire trucks, effectively we'll send those to someplace in the county, and yet they're not paying for that service.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You know, that's a whole nother subject. Let me just, let me broach that a little bit. Our fire department basically responds as a assistant to every fire department in this county. There's nine fire departments, and we roll on basically every call as an assistant because we know that, that, you know, a certain subdivision's not gonna have enough help to put out a house fire. But you know what? They do the same thing for us, too. They respond as well. And I saw nine fire departments helping put, put out a fire over in a subdivision behind El Chico. It's just incredible the amount of volunteerism that we have. But the bottom line is, is we're citizens of Granbury, are funding more fire equipment than any other fire department in the, in the county, and we're staffing it with more volunteers, and they're responding to more calls. And, and they're doing that on the taxpayers' back of Granbury. So the 9,500 people that live in our city are funding firefighting in the county. I just want you to realize that. And so whenever we annex, we're eliminating some of those calls being outside the county. And to make things even worse, the citizens of this city, our 9,500 citizens, pay county taxes. What are we getting in return? Okay, we get a jail, we get a district attorney, we get a county judge, what?
Library.
We get a library, and we pay a tax for that, too. And, and we pay a road and bridge tax.
Come on, let's go with the question.
We need, we need annexation to eliminate a lot of that that's going on.
So I will take that as a yes to my question.
Okay. Council, any more discussion on, and here again, we're not voting, we're not, we're not voting to approve, we're voting to issue the resolution and to accept the ordinance here. Any more questions? More questions? Like I said, this is a two-part one here. The first one we're gonna be voting on is to entertain a motion to approve the resolution, resolution to enable the city to begin the involuntary annexation proceedings, including directing the city staff to prepare the draft service plan for the subject areas, sections one through five, as generally depicted, and to allow for the city manager to enter into annexation development agreements for agriculture exempt. That is a motion.
So moved.
Entertain a motion. Got that motion by Councilman Corrigan. And a second by Councilman Reiner. Council, any more discussion on that part? Hearing none. Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilman Reiner?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That is approved. Our next portion, part of this, is to accept the introduction of the draft ordinance for the selected areas, section one through five. Council, do you have any discussion on that portion of it? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the introduction of the draft ordinance.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Any more discussion, Council? Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That is approved. As, as Scott has, had mentioned, item number 13, he kind of covered that a little bit, but item number 13 is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1913, whereby the city council of the city of Granbury, Texas establishes a date, time, and a place for the first and second public hearing for the voluntary annexation. Scott, is there anything additional you want to add to that, or we just need to go ahead and set the date for you?
If you would, just at council's discretion, set the date. I know the city staff gave two options, A and B. The first option being May, May 7th at noon as the first public hearing, and at 6 o'clock at the regularly scheduled council meeting as the second public hearing.
I will tell you that that option B is probably not a good option there. We got several council members gonna be gone. But, Council, as you, as Scott has indicated here, option A is actually setting the date for May 7th, 2019, with a special meeting at noon, and then for the, the regular meeting at our regular council meeting. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I wanted, I disagree with having a meeting at noon, because a lot of these citizens might not be able to, to get off. I know it's only 29 of them, but they should be heard from.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the intent was to allow two waves. There's different people that work different shifts and what have you. And so we were thinking our, our retired citizens would probably rather come to a noon meeting than a 6:00 p.m. meeting, and then there may be some shift workers that would not be able to come to one of those meetings, so.
If that's the case, we should change our council meeting.
Okay. We can do that.
Well, that, Councilman Allen, that's the purpose of having two, though, is actually to accommodate, you know, the different, if you had both of them at this, at 6 o'clock, you know, you'd get the same amount of people.
Have one at 5 o'clock, the other.
Five at.
Would you go for that, Mayor?
I don't think.
You don't, you don't anticipate a lot of that.
I think you need a little more separation than, than a couple of minutes between one public hearing and the next.
I don't think.
It's disingenuous to do it like that.
I don't think it'll last.
It depends on how many people come and have questions.
That's made of what you say.
So it's the first day of, it's our first regular council meeting day.
It's a, it's a council meeting day, and what we're proposing here is to have the first meeting at noon, and the, the next one would be at our regular council meeting.
It's just a public hearing.
Yeah, just a public hearing.
If you can't all make it, you don't have to. Or if you could have to leave early, you can do that, so.
My vote be 4 o'clock in.
When's the next meeting?
The next meeting of March.
Are you saying 4 o'clock in the regular council meeting?
There's a, there's a very. There's a, there's a very tight window of opportunity. You can have it on the 7th or the 9th of that week.
Okay.
And there's, there's been two council members that cannot attend on the 9th.
I, I can't be here on the 9th.
Yeah, the 9th is out.
One of them, yes, sir.
The 9th is out.
But we have to do it within that three or four day time window.
But I think what Mr. Allen's saying, if, if you did it at 4 o'clock and then had another one at 6, is that what you're saying, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
I, you know, I might, Chris, you, you know, you're taking away the opportunity there to, if, if there is a lot of questions, a lot of folks would show up, then you're going to go right on into the, the council meeting and be one constant meeting. You know, I, I would like to see a little better.
I've been through two annexes.
Gap between that.
I've never seen it.
Well, I, I know, I know.
You know.
Me, me, too.
It could.
But, uh, we could, we could move it to 1 o'clock. Before we get into somebody's lunch or whatever.
Well, we have lunch.
That's the way it works. I can order you a.
Ah, yeah, I knew you heard that. So Counsel, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for a motion on a time and a place, and.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Wadley?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve option A.
So I have a motion for option A, which is noon on the 7th and 6 o'clock on the 7th.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on these dates? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The date will be on May the 7th, 2019, at noon, and also May the 7th, 2019, at the regular council meeting, right here at the city hall. Thank you, Counsel. Our next item is to discuss and consider reducing the pay for elected, for city elected officials. This item was put on the agenda by Councilman Allen, so I'm going to open the floor up to Councilman Allen.
Mayor, I'm going to ask us to move that to the next meeting.
You want to make a motion to table that, then?
Yes, sir, to the next meeting.
To the next council meeting. So we have a motion to table this for the next council meeting? We have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilperson Reiner? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That item will be tabled for the next council meeting. I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, and that all the members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections. Section 551, 071, consultation with the attorney. Section 551, 072, deliberation regarding real property, and Section 551, 087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will go in an executive session. Who do you want back here for? Is now reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in executive session. Counsel, is there any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is now adjourned.